... specialty is in audits and auditing governmental entities. And so, really would strongly recommend his candidacy to you all this evening. I hope that it meets with your approval. On Commissioner Shaw's other important point regarding transition, we obviously do still have Cindy with us for a little bit longer. And she is presenting the SMA budget to you this evening. She is working on small fund budgets tonight as well. And her and I are in constant contact and have been for the last few weeks since she's been in and out of the office. She will be with us into the month of June as we finalize the budget. She'll be before this body again, I think at the next meeting, and then on June 4th, where we're asking for final adoption. So, this is a really unique opportunity where we have somebody local that can transition in. Cindy, although she's departing, has been very gracious with her time and generous with her ability to come in the office on occasion and work nights and weekends for us. So, this is about as seamless as a transition as I think we could have made. And I do not think you or the public or staff will hopefully notice much of a disruption in between this as this process concludes. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments?
I move adopt, what is that, section E?
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Call a question.
Mayor, I believe that was Commissioner Rutherford? Or was that?
Well, we, as you said, it's on the thing.
It was a time.
Oh, okay.
One of my ears works better than the other one.
Same way with me.
I was talking to one of them today.
Motion carries seven zero. Welcome, nice to have you. Item two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit per person and a 12-minute limit per topic. If you'd like to address the commission, please come to the podium, introduce yourself, sign in, and say what's on your mind.
Oh, that's an open, open statement. Just kidding.
You only have three minutes.
Good to know. We've missed you all. So, here we go. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Just very quickly, this Saturday evening, downtown Shawnee, Oklahoma is going to host Studio 112 and 1/2, is hosting our very, very first, the only one that we know of in existence, indoor graffiti show. It's happening. We have five very talented graffiti artists who are painting and are putting their works inside our art studio on the walls. We've cleared everything out. They have full access. Talked with the chief, he said make sure they stay inside. So, they're doing everything inside. And we're having an artist reception at 6:30 on Saturday evening. It is open to the public. And I think we're going to have a really, really good turnout. Oklahoma City, other galleries in Oklahoma City, Norman and Tulsa are featuring our studio. So, I'm really looking forward to having some big guests in Shawnee, Oklahoma on Main Street this Saturday evening, 6:30 to 9:30. That's it.
Great.
Good things happening downtown.
Anyone else care to address this? Okay. Item three, mayor's proclamations. Better hearing month.
All coming out.
Whereas audiologists in Shawnee, Oklahoma, and they can quite observe and celebrate Better Hearing Month each year during the month of May. And whereas the Shawnee City Commission recognizes and values the efforts of all the work to eliminate or minimize the isolating effects of communication disorders in one of the five families affected by them. And whereas more than half the people with hearing loss are younger than 65. And whereas hearing loss is the third most common health problem in the United States affecting 10% of the population, that equals over 17,000 people in the Shawnee, Denver area. Whereas our citizens who have overcome communication disabilities through services of audiologists are now able to lead more independent, productive, fulfilling lives. And whereas Shawnee is proud and honored to have audiologists offering quality education and healthcare services to its citizens. Now therefore, I, Richard Finley, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 2018 a Better Hearing Month. Congratulations.
You can say a word.
Thank you so much for this honor again this year. And every year, we have so many people that pass through our clinic that we see the devastation from hearing loss. And so much of it's preventable. And so, we appreciate you all helping us call attention to it and just get people thinking a little bit about what's going on with their ears and taking care of them. We'd also like people to become aware of things that can help people with hearing loss to hear better, like in rooms like this, improving the sound system, putting in loop systems to help people. And hopefully, we can make progress in the coming years on getting that, helping more people. So, thank you.
Community action month.
Are you French, come up here by yourself?
I am. I'm terrified.
She may import like the man. This is community action month. Whereas community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law. And whereas community action agencies have a 53-year history of promoting self-sufficiency for those with limited incomes. And whereas community action agencies have made an essential contribution to individuals and families in Oklahoma by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs. And whereas Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency continues to lead the efforts to eradicate poverty by assisting families to a variety of programs and services. And whereas community action agencies help people and change lives and body a spirit of hope and make Oklahoma and America a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I, Richard Finley, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, hereby proclaim the month of May, May 2018, a community action.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
This is also National Law Enforcement. We're proud to have the good force that we do. Whereas in the performance of the mission of welfare and well-being of our community, law enforcement officers are engaged on a daily basis in the hazardous and life-threatening profession. And whereas our citizens' peace of mind comes from knowledge that these officers are readily available for crime prevention, crime repression, and protection of life and property. And whereas in some cases, the officer actually gives his life in exchange for the welfare of the community. And whereas our community has a continued sense of gratitude to these brave men and women who have given their lives defending and protecting our city. And whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy established a national day of commemorative commemoration known as a National Police Memorial Day in honor of these men and women. Whereas in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe, your valuable service should be applauded and held in highest regard all through the year. For without your commitment, devotion, and hard work, countless numbers of lives and property would be in jeopardy. Thank you for having our communities and keeping us safe. Now therefore, I, Richard Finley, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, hereby proclaim the region, Richard Finley, Mayor of Shawnee, Oklahoma, a national law enforcement.
Thank you. Thank you. Item four, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 4900 North Harrison Avenue from C-3 Highway Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development, case number PO518, applicant TLP Associates, Inc. This has been deferred by the planning commission to the June 6, 2018, meeting. And I would entertain a motion to likewise defer this until our meeting following that, which is?
June 18.
June 18. Who moved? Moved by Commissioner Bouchon.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven oh. Item five, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 3946 North Kickapoo Avenue from R-1 Single Family Residential District to C-3 Highway Commercial District, case number PO918, applicant Darren Sparkman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review the staff report, which is in your file. The planning commission heard this case on May 2nd, and they recommended approval with a vote of five yays, one abstention, and no nays. This property is kind of sandwiched between two commercial properties, to the north and to the south. This is the only residential property in that stretch along Kickapoo Street. There are existing commercial and completed commercial projects there. Also, commercial projects that are under construction at present. So, this is, the rezoning of this property would facilitate additional commercial development and would allow those developments to tie in. There is an effort underway, which is actually your item number six, which is related, which would seek to unify those developments in terms of shared driveways and access and parking requirements and landscaping requirements, even though there is some differing ownership. So, with that, staff does recommend approval. The notice in your packet actually shows conditions. This is a rezone, and we don't normally attach conditions to the rezone. The conditions that are listed are all already applicable through our regular building and zoning code requirements. So, staff would recommend approval without conditions. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Let's see, declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Public hearing is hereby closed. Is there a motion?
I'll move to.
Commissioner Gill moved to approve.
Three in one series.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Any questions? Further discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read the title in briefly. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to WIP, Block 6, Block 1, College View Addition to the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof from zoning classification R-1 Single Family Residential District to C-3 Highway Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Now call a question. Motion carries seven ayes. Item six, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 3954 North Kickapoo Avenue from C-2 Suburban Office Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development, case number PO818, applicant Kirk Kalies, deferred by the planning commission to the June 6 meeting.
Yes, sir. And staff would recommend deferment until your June 18 meeting, please.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to defer until our June what?
18.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven ayes. Item seven, consider approval of fiscal year 2018-2019 insurance rates for Blue Cross Blue Shield, Delta Dental and Vision Service Plan, and approved payment of the rate increase for health insurance for non-union employee group by the city.
As you know, it's that time of year again we do insurance. And the dental vision is, there was a pass, we didn't have any increase, and those are employee contribution only. The big one is Blue Cross Blue Shield. I know we have talked a little bit about possibly going self-insured and different options, and that's why Dustin's here, who's our insurance work group. I'll let him explain exactly what they did on healthcare, and then I will come back and ask you for the money.
Good evening. My name's Dustin Brand. I'm the senior consultant with Ensurica. We've worked with the city for a number of years. And in working through this year's renewal, Blue Cross Blue Shield proposed the renewal with a 6.8% increase, which was increasing your premium cost by more than $208,000. We were able to successfully negotiate that down to a 2.8% increase, which brings that $208,000 premium increase down to about an $89,000 increase. So, it was a significant premium reduction offered by Blue Cross Blue Shield. The condition of your plan overall continues to run very well. You've got about a 78% loss ratio, medical loss ratio, looking at your premiums versus your claims. You have five large claims that are considered serious and ongoing. There is some signs and threat of emerging risk that could eat into that performance. We did remarket. We marketed with four different TPAs or third-party administrators who process claims in that self-funded arena, including Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is your incumbent. With Blue Cross Blue Shield, it was actually going to cost you about $28,000 more to self-fund your health plan today. Looking at the competition that came in, United Healthcare, which owns a company called UMR, another third-party administrator, offered a program that could potentially save the city about $300,000 if you, if your claims came in at expected, where they expect you. But it could also, if the claims went south on you and the risk picked up, could cost you about $200,000 over what you spend today with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, the recommendation that Ensurica has made, taking into account the change in the finance team, the emerging risk, keeping in mind that the recommended specific deductible for a program this size is $90,000, so, meaning every single person would have a $90,000 exposure to the self-funded plan, and taking into account that emerging risk, our recommendation is to proceed in renewing with Blue Cross Blue Shield, however, keeping the self-funded discussion, the self-funded strategy alive, and continuing that discussion and focusing on selecting first a third-party administrator and exploring some different, you know, direct provider contracting that could bring some innovation into your plan. And then, from there, you'd be ready and well-positioned for the next renewal to lock down the stop-loss carrier to protect you on the large claims exposure.
Are there any questions, Dustin?
An average, that's an average increase over each month, about 2.8%.
It's a 2.8% increase in the premium. And just to give you an idea, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, when they calculated your renewal, they trended the claim, the medical claims by 6.4% and the pharmacy claims by 7.2%. Your performance last year and this year is blended together. So, they weighted 78% from this year, remaining percent from last year. That's how they came up with the proposed increase. So, by us getting it down to the 2.8%, is you're coming in well below the average trend for Blue Cross Blue Shield rules. The trend is, actually, Blue's trend is lower than it, and Blue and United are right about the same. And this is a little bit higher.
Dustin, can you educate me on what you mean by innovation into the plan?
Absolutely. Today, you've got just a regular traditional PPO network. When you take your plan self-insured, there is a lot more flexibility and opportunity for you to take advantages, take advantage of programs like the Free Market Medical Association, where providers have worked on a direct basis and offered best quality in care, but they're providing a deeper discount of claims. So, you're going to have a deeper discount even than what you're getting today through a regular PPO network.
Does the third-party administrator help with that also and give some guidance?
They do. Yeah, they'll provide the outreach to the doctors, the local doctors. Shawnee Milling, I know, is using this same program. So, it's worked here locally, and because we want to make sure that we're protecting your doctors as well as the city employees.
Thank you. Thank you.
Staff is asking the consideration to go ahead and absorb the additional healthcare cost. I'll be honest, the ELC, next meeting, the budget's very tight for general fund. I really don't think I can incorporate a COLA. So, this is less than if we did even a small COLA, but it's also giving something to the employees besides their merit. And this is for non-union employees only. The unions would have to be negotiated. So, it'll be roughly between $70,000 and $80,000 to cover it.
But I did read that our employees are still going to be getting the merit increase.
Correct.
Okay. So, this is a benefit. It's just not the COLA.
Correct. And just, and you'll see in the SMA presentation, the cost of living is a little over 2% right now. So, I mean, this is something. And this is right, at this point, is the best I can do right now, budget-wise.
Any other questions?
I move with a further picture and also the increase to be paid for by the city.
Motion by Commissioner Harrod, is there a second?
Any employees, thank you.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Salter. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven ayes.
And just to be clear, you know, the city has three plans, $750,000 and $2,000. All the increase that is basically based on the $2,000 like it has been for the last few years. So, if some of them wants to buy a premium plan, they will have to pay the difference. But they'll get the 2%. Like, for example, you know, the employee-only at the $2,000 is 401, and now it's 414, that city's going to contribute. They'll get that $14 toward their premium plan.
Great, thank you. Might as well stay there. Item eight is a presentation, preliminary budget for small and miscellaneous funds for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Oh, that's a sentence. The other one. Yeah. This is going to be quick, because there's really not a whole lot. This has never been a big issue. These are some of the small funds that I've worked on. We also have a few that we have not, because, one, the contract review has not finalized the contract, so I don't want to put that in there yet. There's some discussion on some of the other, so those are not in here. These are just the basic ones. Street and alley fund. This is basically a small fund that is by the motor vehicle tax and the excise tax. Unfortunately, it does not pay for itself. This pays for strictly streetlights. The general fund has to fund it. And then the other miscellaneous income is, we have streetlights down near the tribal area that they pay for. They pay 100% of those. 911 is pretty much self-explanatory. These are the 911 fees that we get in. We've had a larger fund balance in the previous years, but we did the complete remodel at the dispatch, and that was over $500,000 that we were able to do to make our police and fire safer with the 911 funds. Oops, I hate this thing. After even all these years, I can't. Pretty much, basically, it's for the telephone, for the 911 dispatch, and some of the, they have a contingency, and the capital outlay is the equipment, is the line that we split with the general fund to run the phone system. Very quick and easy. Revolving oil and gas fund, it's just permits, pretty much. And once in a while, I mean, there's really hasn't been any expenses in quite a while that come out of this account. So, we need to look into a little farther and see what we might want to do with that. Stay and neuter funds, pretty self-explanatory. That's a very small fund, too. The revenues and the expenditures, we try to do as much stay and neutering as possible. Maybe next year, we might want to consider increasing their budget for expense, since we do have about $19,000 in it. That would do a lot of dogs, you know, cats and dogs, so. Hotel motel, this is by ordinance, it's a 5% tax that we get, excuse me, and we keep administration fee. And that, and the only other expense really that comes out of that is our administration fee. We do a hotel motel audit every year. Randomly, they take three hotels and do an audit, and it does keep them honest. Police sales tax, this is part of the third penny. This is done by ordinance. Basically, the police and fire funds, I'm not exactly 100% sure why they were set up this way years ago, but it's basically, these were set up to help fund the police and fire. So, it gets transferred back to the general fund, which helps pay for the police and fire. Pretty much, they're both identical in sales tax, and then it transfers it back to the general fund. But it has to be used on police and fire. But as you see, the transfer of the general fund is less than $400,000 a year. The police department is well over $5 million to run, and so is the police. Police and fire are both over $5 million apiece, almost $6 million. Same thing. You can tell I was doing it on Saturday, I had a little cartoon. And that's it pretty much right now for the small funds, and then we'll do the rest of them once we get the contracts, you know, from the contract review. So, and then there's some that you probably, you do not really see a budget, it's just a general one. And like the workman's comp, we're self-funded. We do a transfer into that. And that's it. Any questions?
Questions?
These are pretty much self-explanatory.
Thank you, Cindy. Item nine, new business.
There is no new business, sir.
Commissioner's comments. Mr. Bouchon?
No.
No?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up one subject, I guess. Recently, we started working, doing some things to the tennis courts and fences that were 40 years old and cheap material at the time they were put in. And we did replace a good part of those with pretty solid fencing that should last for perhaps 100 years. We also had some wind screens put up. We're looking, though, at a situation with tennis courts, the most problematic thing probably the city faces, it's not a big thing necessarily, but the fact is that asphalt, under those circumstances, cracks very easily. And you come, you do repairs on it, for instance, and typically, within a year, you're looking exactly the same things all over again. And during that time, you've already dealt with cracks for the players to be on. Moving them to a different place would be out of the question. And there are methods, I think, that I'm seeing that possible repairs could be done if we get at least a five-year guarantee on it. And hopefully, the school, since it's this park situation, would be 50% city, and the school, of course, is also involved usually for that mine. So, I've asked the coaches to look into the possibility of the school coming through with a portion of that and go on a basis of perhaps over a number of years, even two or three years or something, of taking a number of the course and then redoing them to where we could get in a five-year cycle, where we could have a recreational facility the kids could be proud of. So, yes, this is very competitive. The kids really love to play. And I think it's a system that, a sport that holds promise for a lot of people. I see lots of young people out there probably learning to play as well. So, I'd like to look at, at least before I leave the commission in 2020, we're seeing those, at least on the method or on the path, of being renewed in a system to where they would be playable and attractive and, let's just say, really usable for kids over the term of, permanent term, actually, get in a system where they were replaced over a period of five years or something of that nature. So, I'm looking into that. I personally looked into it. And of course, I've not talked to Justin or anybody else about this, but just some, just a goal I'd like to have before I leave this commission. about this, but just some, this is a goal I'd like to have before I leave this commission in 2020. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrod?
I've been out by the fire station lately, I was wondering how that was coming.
Chief, could you might give a brief update?
It's, it's, it's coming along well. Progress has come along well. The, there's lots to be done out there, though. The substantial completion date right now is May twenty-eighth. I just talked with the project supervisor this evening, and they still, they still feel good about that date. They said it's going to be tight, but there's been a lot of work done on the inside. The walls are up on the inside, sprinkler, fire sprinkler system, most electrical's been run, plumbing, all that stuff. They've done the masonry work on the inside, looked for them to start the masonry work on the outside very soon. Did have, they did have an issue between the general contractor and the roofing contractor, a payment issue that's held them up some that they need to get worked out, and I think they have now got that completed, but the roof is probably ninety percent done, but they still have some, some work to be done on the roof. So that's kind of where we are right now.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I do. I wanted to, Don Lynch isn't here, the storm season being here. He's, he's, oh, there he is. I'm sorry, I was focused elsewhere. Good job on, good job on the sirens. That was well timed. Hopefully, we don't have to hear them anymore, but if you do need to, it was nice to hear them. So wanted to thank you for that. And the city's new website, great website, good job on that. I keep hearing, just in general discussion, people talking about the city's website. Don't realize how many people go to that until it's all new and works very well, so thanks, everyone's working on that. Thanks. Commissioner Shaw?
I'm glad you brought that up, about the Saturday evening Studio One event. I saw a number of youth out today that were looking at one of our murals that was up on a wall, and I'm sure we're going to have a great number of individuals that are interested in how your indoor graffiti project works out. So, well done. I'm glad to hear about the fire station. Every time I go by there, it just seems like there's one more phase done, or something new that's hanging on to it, so I'm certainly relieved to see that. I noticed that most of the roof was up, as you had indicated, so good to see that. Do we have a full-scale insurance or comprehensive insurance on that in case something happens? God forbid, through tornadoes and all of that, thank goodness. I noticed in the Shawnee Outlook that the swimming pool is getting ready to open up, and Justin, would you mind sharing any of the upcoming details on that with us? Or do you have that available?
It's the Memorial Day weekend, I believe, is the, is the, I think, it opens that Friday, that Friday afternoon. And I apologize, I don't, I don't, it's been a little while since we talked about that schedule, so I don't have those just readily available, but I can certainly email those out to the commission. We're, of course, going to have it out on our website as well. But there's a whole, if you haven't seen the Shawnee Outlook this month, towards the back, there's a, there's a two-page spread that has a calendar dedicated to the, event calendar dedicated to the pool, and then general parks and recreation events, and it's.
There's a lot of it.
There is.
Amazing events that's going to be occurring over that short period of time, I saw, and the Shawnee Outlook certainly did a good job in putting all of that information out there for the public to see. So another thing I'd like to know about at some point in time is, there was a lot of information that was given out, and a lot of discussion that was held over the merger between the Ch, the Chamber of Commerce and the Shawnee Economic Development Foundation. And I think that we need to see what's going on within that process and how that's working. And I, in particular, would love to, to know what all is going on and what's happening. So at some point in time, if you'd put that on the agenda, so that we could get a report and know how that's progressing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't add anything that was already been said.
Okay. My comments generally deal with the sales tax. We've got a, a sales tax proposal to increase in June twenty-sixth, and so if you all know of groups that would like for someone to come speak, Justin, I, or someone, we'll, we'll make sure that somebody gets there to, to educate the public about what we're asking for and, and how it's earmarked and, and the gist of that. That being said, yes.
Not notice that out in the water, Bill, it's fine, too.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Item one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
Agreed.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gilson. Motion carries with seven ayes. Item two, discussion and consideration of execution of a letter of interest to accept capital funds from the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, everybody's listeners. Once again, it's my privilege to come and let you know that we're going to get free money. This has been a really great experience for me, coming to visit with y'all, because it seems like every time I'm at this podium, I'm telling you about more free money, so keep that trend up. We have a program with the FAA, as well as the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission, over the next five years for major capital development. And in order to stay within that program, the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission is asking us for a letter of intent for our portion or of a, a project to fix the cracks and reseal, in this case, not the tennis courts, but the runway at the airport. And as I'm sure you've experienced before with these types of grants, the Federal Aviation Administration approves only ninety percent of applied costs to the program, seeking a ten percent contribution from the local sponsoring authority. They do allow the local sponsoring authority, in this case, the City of Shawnee, to work with economic partners, and the state of Oklahoma has offered to participate at five percent, so cutting our, our participation down to five percent. It's a pretty good deal, because the project itself is estimated at eight hundred, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars, so any, any portion that they'd like to offer us, I think, would be a benefit to the overall program package. In order to do that, we do need to have authorization, and so the staff is recommending that the Airport Authority Board authorize the city manager to execute that letter.
Any questions, Bonnie?
I'd move with authorize the city manager.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any further discussion? Call question. Motion carries seven ayes. Item three, discussion and consideration of proposed lease agreement between the City of Shawnee and Red Cloud Aviation LLC.
Thank you, same exact, sir. In this case, we have a tenant at the Shawnee Regional Airport who has made a plan to expand his business profile to the aviation users, and has recently received his preliminary approval from the Federal Aviation Administration to frankly up-gauge his services that he provides as a mechanic to a certified one forty-five repair station. The one forty-five refers to an enormously long and painful regulation that goes into details about what you can do once you, once you receive that seal of approval for the airport itself. The good news is, of course, that'll increase our profile in the community and bring, hopefully, a lot more customers to buy fuel and use our facilities while they're getting repairs to this equipment. I'd like to point out also that, in doing some research on this, it turns out that we do not have very many of these certified stations in eastern Oklahoma, and we have a station on the airport now for helicopter purposes, but that's a different kind of certification. But for fixed-wing aircraft, which is what Red Cloud is looking to do, we do not have that. So that would put us as a, as a kind of a premier spot in the eastern Oklahoma aviation system. So the recommendation, then, would be to authorize the execution of a lease to allow Red Cloud Aviation to move into the mezzanine space, which is currently vacant, in the terminal area, to allow for customer interface and administrative services.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bouchon.
Is it just the one office up there, or do we have an office leased out now? Two?
Yes, so there is a single office there, and that lease has just terminated, and so it is currently vacant. It has been since the beginning of this month, and we're hoping to be able to bring Red Cloud on very quickly, so we don't have a revenue loss.
Any other questions? Discussion? Call question. Motion carries seven aye. Item four, discussion and consideration of a request to amend existing lease between the City of Shawnee and Fly OK Air LLC.
In this particular case, it's a little bit of a shift of view. Fly OK Air is a good actor, and came to the city and applied for a change in the billing for the water usage for the hangar, not being aware that that billing incorporated a spigot that has been used as a rather public water service across the last, say, forty years. And did not notice that this was going to be an economic impact on his very small business until the first warm days of February, when many of our other tenants decided it was a good time to wash aircraft. Noticing the significant spike in the bill, we were able to work together to track it back to what is, just by, just by plumbing, a spigot that has been traditionally used and offered as a customer service to most of our tea-hanger tenants. And so the request is to authorize staff to work with the attorney to amend the lease, so that the very small business Fly OK Air does not assume the great large responsibility for the water bill for the thirty other tenants in the tea-hangers.
Well done.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw. Is there a second? By Commissioner Rutherford. Call question. Motion carries seven ayes. Item five, discussion and consideration request to execute an agreement between the City of Shawnee and Heartland Aviation governing a public aviation memorabilia display.
Yes, thank you. In this particular case, it is revenue neutral, but I think it is community good. The airport staff was approached by the managing director of the Heartland Aviation Association, which is a program intended to introduce various people to the enormous number of job opportunities in the aviation field. A lot of times, when people think of aviation, they think, oh, let's go fly a plane. That's a very good job. Mechanics also, and, as well as airport managers. And Heartland Aviation's mission is to reach out and educate the public about the various ways that you can become involved in, in the aviation field. It has been working with the museums in Oklahoma City, as well as with Gordon Cooper Tech Center, to bring some of these items together in a display, which they would like to put into the terminal area of the Shawnee Regional Airport, to let the public see that there's more than one way to be an aviator. This would be at no cost to the, the airport, and all of the furnishings will be provided by Heartland Aviation. We're looking for a one-year term in order to make sure that we do have room for other people with similar public information displays and opportunity to do the same.
Is this pursuant to the one-year term? Is this pursuant to our request or their request? What my question is, is why is this matter coming before us, and why is it not strictly a matter of the, of the Airport Authority?
Well, sir, this is something new. We do not have agreements of this nature to date, and so that since this is a new type of agreement, we thought it would be a good idea to bring it to the Airport Authority, so that we can establish the parameters. As far as why it's a one-year agreement, yes, sir, that is at the staff and advisory board's recommendation, because, again, it is new. We have not gotten into a relationship of this nature before, so we'd like to get a chance to make sure that it works well, it doesn't impede our primary mission of providing aviation services.
And, Justin, do you concur that this needs to come before the commission?
We, on this first example, yes. I think what's nice is this will hopefully provide a good example and a positive example, and in the future, I would say no.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Motion carries seven ayes. Any new business?
Yes, sir.
You've been busy, Bonnie. Thank you. Good job. We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. And once again, would entertain a motion to consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw. Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Call question.
And you're ready, I understand.
Motion carries seven ayes. Presentation of preliminary Shawnee Municipal Authority budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
This will be short, too. As you know, we're getting geared up to ready to do the new plants and do all that rehab of tune of, like, thirty-three million dollars. So this year is going to be very conservative to try to save some money to start putting there. Yes, and I just noticed it says two thousand eighteen eighteen, so I'm not yelling one. It's hard when you work in multiple years sometimes. Right now, this is the current rate structure. The rate structure with a five-year plan. The last increase we had was November first of two thousand and thirteen. This is just something I normally put in, in the presentation every year, so that you have it, because I gave a copy of the presentation. Earlier, I spoke about the CPI. This is all the urban consumers, we happen to be in the Florida range in one sector. The March sixteenth numbers were two-point-three percent of cost of living, and even with the rolling six months, the economy seems to be coming back, but our, some of our revenues are just not there. So we all have to remember to shout Shawnee. But these are just, this is a quick summary, and I apologize, because it should have been reversed, you're correct, when I started looking closer. These are the different departments. We have utility billing, utility administration, lake operations, water production, water distribution, north and south side treatment plants, sewer collection valves that service and transfer outs. Those are the, those are the total expenses that, it's just a quick little summary. Our expenses for this year are fifteen million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, and our revenues, basically, it mostly is sanitation, water, which is a standard, the revenue is eighteen million this year. I didn't put a sheet on this. Our revenues technically would be around thirteen million, thirteen and a half million, but we are anticipating going to the OWRB next year and starting the loan process with, for the plants, and I'm estimating right now to having to take about five million dollars next year. Once we get the plant, we've already spent, I don't know if you can hear, we've already spent quite a bit of money on the engineering, and once the plans and specs are ready to go out to bid, then we'll get an idea, the cost-wise, and the budget can be amended, but I'm just estimating, since it's going to be probably, when do you think it will start, go out to bid? January, February?
Early twenty nineteen.
So it's going to be like a quarter of the year, but I did want to incorporate it into the budget, because some of those expenses, we've already expended, like, for all the engineering, we can reimburse ourselves with the, with the, with the, with the. For that means, water sales, I just use one percent based on estimated near end. Water sales are hard to determine, because it either if you're drought, or, you know, depends, it's based on how much usage. The slight increase in sewer sanitation is based on actual, and that's basically the new hookups. The industrial pretreat is much less, because there is not the need for it anymore. The loan proceeds, I just mentioned, the five million, is first installment for the OWRB. The interest income is estimated here, and it's really high. Somehow, throughout the last year, the percentages were off, so I did a one-time adjustment to clean it up, and, because the interest really belonged with SMA and not general fund, so somebody else got it taken away. Expenses, overall, two and a half merit on anniversary date, unfortunately, with the general fund, I know they're two different funds, but can't, we're not looking at a COLA right now. Paying the two and a half percent increase, I was hoping to do that. There's not a lot of capital, because the rehab and new plant are ready to begin. And also, if you look on the different pages, the retirement has really fluctuated in some of the departments. We've had some people move around that might have been on the DB, go to another department, and a lot of the, well, all the new hires now has a different retirement than, so when it's all the depart, all the different cost centers, it's pretty much the same, but it's just really noticeable, like, you have one that is twenty thousand, and all of a sudden, it's sixty thousand. But it's because the DB plans, some of them have moved around. The health insurance is also all over the place. It's really hard to estimate, because a lot of the new, we're not sure what the new employees take, are going to take. So the rule of thumb I've always budgeted is the family plan, but we're also finding that a lot of the younger employees are not taking insurance, because they can stay on their parents until age twenty-six. So it's kind of a, so you may see, we may have had metered or replying, we had a bunch of them that had no insurance, and then all of a sudden, this year, we have some vacancies, I don't know if you filled them, but when I was doing the budget, there was vacancies, so I budgeted the hire, so it really shows different. Utility billing, vacancies, retirement, I've already discussed that. Other contractual service, that's the, service that prints and mails our bills, there's no capital, it's There's no capital, but next fiscal year, we need to look at replacing the meter reader trucks. They are approximately five years old already, and they don't, they don't last, you know, some of them, because they're, it's a start and start. Utility administration, the part-time salary is estimated year-end is high, we did a lot of pipe bursting, and we had two part-time employees at SMA overseeing the pipe bursting to make sure it was staying on track. Other contractual service, the biggest part of it is sanitation bill, which is central disposal. Purchase of land is carried off for the last few years. We're running out of space, and we need to constantly look for a place to put some of the big trucks, and the bank charges keep going up. More and more customers are paying online and using credit cards, and it's a fee we pay to process them, and it's basically a cost of doing business.
On the services, center services, are we covering our expenses on billing and so forth?
Yes, yes. Water production, nothing unusual. Pipe bursting, we have allocated a couple million dollars, but that may decrease depending on the construction, if we decide to use more cash for some of the startups. Lake operation, the only big item in there is the other contractual services, and that's what we pay up for our share, which is 85% of the West Wakan Recreation. The fees they take, and we pay the overage, and then we pay 85%, and I think it's to come to the page of 15. North side, nothing unusual. This, this is hard to see. I just put this in for FYI. This is going to be more important next year. This is just a quick little amortization schedule that I did for $30 million. Based on a 20, 20-year loan at 3% interest, which, you know, interest could change every day, but the OWRB is really good about their rates, and they're usually the lowest, and there's also different type of grants that we can get, so hopefully, we can get our exposure to the minimal. But the estimated debt service on a 20-year loan for $30 million is going to be about $2 million a year for the plants. The next page is 30-year, 3%, and it's about $1.5 million, so. These are the current debt for SMA. We refinanced a couple of years ago, if you remember, the PCDA loan. We upfronted that additional $500,000, but that's going to pay off in September of 2023. When we did the refinance, and by doing the front load, the higher principal for a while, and the refinance, we were able to, I think it was like eight years we were taking, and it saved over $1.8 million, if I remember that. And then, we have a $5.4 million OWRB loan, which was 30-inch water line, and then the $14 million, I can't remember my life right now what that 1.4 million is, but they are quite long, so they'll be paying off in 2031.
Have you anticipated a rate increase in your revenues?
No, I have not.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir, there is not.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.